Good evening, everybody. And welcome to the school committee meeting for October 4th, 2023. We'll call it To Order, 7:02. And looking forward to a packed agenda. Have many guests. It's great to see you all here, but before we dive into that, we will stand pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so first, we will just need to approve our agenda for this evening. Does anybody have any changes? I do have one. Didn't have the finance committee meeting to review the end of your report unless there's a time constraint associated with that. I'm booked at this point until the next meeting.
This is not the fourth quarter report. This is the end of your report. There has to be something to discuss.
Okay.
So there is a time.
Okay, so we will keep that on the agenda? Okay, all right. Any, any other changes?
Quarterly curriculum is not expressly on here, but it was in the meeting packet.
Yes, so my understanding is that it's going to be sort of combined with the data presentation.
Yeah, so the spring data presentation essentially is also kind of subsuming the curriculum work that we're doing right now. It kind of connected to that data. And as we get into that presentation, I'll share a little bit more about where we are, how we constructed that, and the thinking.
Thank you, because yeah, remember, the goal is to kind of bring those two things into one conversation. So yes, but that's, that's gonna be great and looking forward to that. Before we get to the superintendent's report and all of these important presentations, the first item is citizen speak. Do we have anyone who's here for citizen speak? Anyone online? If you would like to raise your hand, if you're joined by Zoom and would like to participate in citizen speak, please raise your hand at this time. All right, thank you. So we will just proceed to the superintendent's report and I'll turn it over to you, Peter. Thanks.
We're just everyone here. Full house. So it's been a really full month. I was surprised when we hit out already and the year is going by really quickly and days have been full for everyone for sure. You all know that I've been working on the listening learning forums. One is tomorrow night at cover, so I've got three more, a slumber and then two more after that. They've been really, really helpful and I think important in terms of getting to know, kind of bringing the community in and I feel like in some ways where I'm working on creating a new concept of how people work together as part of decision making or whatever we had. It's, it's been really gratifying to, to hear from people that have been coming and, and they've been really appreciative of, of of the book, the process of the forums, but also just, I think, being heard. I don't think we can, we can overstate how important that is to, to make sure that people feel heard. In my superintendent role, I've been doing a lot of networking over the last month as I kind of get into the kind of annual things that happen through the superintendent's association. I've been a part of some mass ready trainings on equity with Nokia, which was really powerful last week. Starting the Tri-County Roundtable, one of the things I did in, in coming in, I, I studied the different groups, the superintendent groups that meet, and generally when you're a superintendent in any state, you're part of a regional group. That regional group will meet monthly, will talk about issues that are happening in schools, will confer about how are you dealing with this or that? As I looked at where Milton, who we are, and who we're most aligned to, I realized that who we had been assigned to didn't quite match who we are. So I've joined Tri-County, which is kind of like moves up towards like Dedham Brookline, like kind of in that direction as opposed to the South Shore, which I think is a slightly different regional reality demographically. So that starts next week, so I'm really excited to, to make connections there as well and, and kind of start to get to know more people. And the folks that I have met have been really helpful, so it has been a pretty smooth transition on that front and fun as well. Met some really good people. Doing school visits right now too, as part of my entry plan. I was at Pierce all day on Monday and it was interesting. I, going in, I kind of felt like, okay, I've kind of heard a lot, I've met so many people, I've had so many conversations, I kind of know, I know what's going on and I left there being like, okay, maybe I don't know everything that's going on. And I think that was really helpful to, to spend time. I spent time with groups of, of teachers and students. I met a couple student groups too and one of the cool things that came out, and one student said, the, the biggest thing that they need at Pierce is naptime. So that's, that's gonna be something I'll be working on. But it was, it was really helpful. Tomorrow I'm going to be at the high school and I'll be at one day in each one of our schools, meeting with, with different teacher groups. And this is something that I'm doing this year, but it's something that I do annually. I think it's really important to not have all of your communication be like a conduit from the central office to teachers, but to make direct contact. So that's something, obviously I'll be visiting schools monthly. Part of my monthly, monthly schedule is spending two to two and a half hours in each school, meeting with principals, checking in, seeing how things are going, and then doing a kind of walkthrough, making connections with teachers, kind of seeing how things are going. So that's kind of how I'll stay connected to what's happening, but I'll also be doing this kind of thing periodically where I'll be meeting with staff and, and, and listening and kind of hearing how things are going. I think it's, it's really important to keep that connection alive through, throughout time. With leaders, with our principals, with our CLT, our full leadership team, we're continuing to work on building a strong foundation for how we work together. That's been really powerful. We meet monthly with a number of different groups and some people are on a few groups, some people are on one or two. So kind of working to, just coming in new, working to understand how all the pieces fit together and really problem solving and creating space for everyone to come together and look at where we are and where we want to go together. So some of this, some people conceive of a leader coming in and dictating everything and, and I don't, I don't know as much as a lot of people know about how things operate currently operate. So I'm creating the, the context and the container and, and people are coming in and I, I've really appreciated the, the work that we've been doing together and I think, I'm hoping that all the folks in the audience here who are part of that are appreciating it too. Okay, good. Good. You'll see in the, in today's packet, there's a principal's report, so this will be a monthly report. The, the goal of this is to give you all just a kind of a view from the principal's perspective of the work that's happening in the school and important things that you might not see in a weekly newsletter. I felt like this was important to, to provide the school committee with just a little bit more information about at each building, kind of the, the kinds of work that's happening and give you a better sense as you're, you all hear lots of things in the community, people come up to you, they, they know you and ask you, hey, X, Y, and Z, for you to have the ability to be, to, to speak to that, to understand it and to see how things connect together. That is one thing we'll be talking about tonight as we talk about the curriculum review and spring data presentation. Trying to connect all these pieces together. It's going to take some time, I think, for us organizationally to get there in terms of all of the pieces that are at play. I kind of realized that this morning when I was, I woke up at five in the morning and I was like thinking about all of these kinds of, like I could see all these pieces in my head and I was like, that's really complex. I think it's gonna take some time, but I'm positive that we can kind of start to move the needle on a lot of these things, which will ultimately impact the objectives that we have laid out. Tonight we have Cunningham in the house. And I'm, I'm, I can take questions now or we can hear from Cunningham, I'm open for either.
Does anyone have any questions about anything that was just shared?
I, I have a short question. Do you choose the group of students that you want to talk to or is it just a randomly encounter?
So at Pierce, it was all the teachers sent like one or two students down from their class. So it wasn't an organized like group that meets all the time. It was an organic group that was created. I'm also working with Karen Cahill right now to put together my superintendent advisory team. So we're working on kind of a, an invite to that as well that will go out to the, all high school students. That, that's gonna be a group that I'm gonna be meeting with monthly and kind of basically keeping my pulse on, you know, how are students feeling? What, what's the student perspective? That's really important as we start to make decisions and make sure that we're, the, the folks that we're serving are part of that, that, that direction.
And is that group of student, the high school student group that you tried to compose, is it in addition to the, the, the leaders they have elected previously?
Yes, yeah.
And how, how do these two group of students going to work together? Or, or is there opportunity for them to work together?
Yeah, there could, there could be. I, I think the one thing I've realized over the years is that there are certain students that are drawn to being on student council. And it's important for me to have a group that's representative with maybe students that might not step, step up to the plate, but have the capacity to. So that's kind of one of the goals I have in putting this group together is, is a reflective group of, of our Milton student body.
Well, we've heard a lot of positive feedback, so I appreciate the fact that you've been thoughtfully engaging our community members because it means a lot in terms of building goodwill as you enter the district, so thank you.
Thank you. It's been great, really has. Now the main, main event.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good to see you all. Excited to be here. This is glad to be back in person. I remember my very first one, they let me get through a whole presentation and said they couldn't hear where it said. I'm glad.
Take, take one of this.
Oh no, he's got the mic. That mic. Wow, I think the mic is, the mic's designed for that.
Now show Andy.
Perfect. I'll share it back.
Am I gonna be able to see the presentation? All right, so getting right into it. So today we're gonna go through our site council presentation or we're gonna talk about some of the work that we are doing here at Cunningham. No, it's fine, I can look at this.
The slides away.
That was a great presentation, thank you. All right, so the structure and format are gonna be familiar. Really wanna talk about who we are at Cunningham School, wanna talk about the goals that we have, the ways you can look for the work if you're coming to visit Cunningham School. And then while we always like to share Cunningham experience with you through video and picture, it's there. I know that through the time, you might wanna watch it in your own time, but I want you to know that that's only two, what I think is a great video Mr. Young put together for us. So. So today in bold, as you can see, I have Mrs. Young, our assistant principal and curriculum coordinator, and this is Butler, our literature director. But you can see, and I always pride ourselves on the big team of site council members that we have. You can see all their names up there and that list is the same from last year minus a couple of people who graduated from Cunningham because I asked them not to leave until we got through this presentation. So my hope is that not only will we be able to stick with this team and continue the work that we're doing here at Cunningham, but also for all the team. So we sent out information for new families to sign up and hopefully not only will this team stay together, we'll be able to add new members, more representation, both from within the school and within the community as well. And mission statements that teachers came up with and sort of the words that sort of reflect what it takes to sort of achieve that mission statement. And you can see from the words there that it's all around support and working together and knowing that this collective effort is also and we're gonna make sure we have high performing students in all of our classrooms. It's a collective effort from all of us to work as a team. And you'll see hopefully through the theme of what we present today is that with your support, we're able to put things in place to help really build more collaborative structures within the school that allows teachers to work together to plan for lessons that really support and meet students where they are. Okay, is this the most updated slide? Go to the next slide. Yes.
Okay. Is that it?
Just the one that just.
I know.
So that D and E chart is still there, but I'll just describe it now to everyone here. And you can change the slide deck, but I think that's like what the other thing. So at Cunningham, we have 610 students. And we have 136 students. And we have more proceeds to, um, free support, or math support, and free support. And I say all this, that's a lot of adults working with students and students and the various levels. So the effort that, you know, this point that you provided to allow us to create ties in the day where consults can happen, where teachers can collaborate and plan together so that when they're working together, it's effective and leading on the students. And that was further than sort of the small group structures that sort of used to say, the classrooms and flexible groups across grade levels are now possible. And that was very challenging when we had to share specialist staff across. We couldn't control schedules the way we'd like to, because I wanted to first say that that really carries out sort of the new work that we're able to do around using our staff to engage students.
Can we do this next? I can speak to it without my slide.
Okay. So I want to turn it over at this time to Mrs. Butler because obviously the work starts in preschool. We have a special education preschool program here at Cunningham School that Mrs. Butler is going to.
I can speak to it without the slide and you'll certainly have it after. The thing you'll miss out on most is cute pictures of preschoolers in action. But I'm excited to speak with you tonight a little bit more about preschool in the district. It's important to keep in mind that this is a district preschool program. So while it is housed at both the Tucker School and the Cunningham School, as students age into kindergarten, they may trickle into any one of our four elementary schools. This isn't like your homeschool neighborhood, these are all of our kids in these preschool programs. They just happen to be housed at Cunningham and at Tucker. But for the purposes of this evening, I'll speak only to the programs that are housed at Cunningham as it relates to the building and kind of fitting in with the, the population as a whole. So at Cunningham, in order to support our youngest learners, we do have two distinct preschool programs housed there. One is our substantially separate full day ABA program and the other is the half day integrated preschool program. So currently at Cunningham, we have three classrooms in that substantially separate ABA program. And then we have three classrooms for the integrated preschool half day program, each having an AM and a PM. So we have six kind of classes of integrated preschoolers, but housed in three different classrooms. So that's kind of the makeup of what we have going on at Cunningham when it comes to programming. Currently, we have, well, actually, before I speak about enrollment, I think this is a good opportunity to just say out loud that this is, as John just mentioned, a special education preschool program. And with that comes, you know, DESI regulations and guidelines that we need to adhere by. So I know that a hot topic in town right now is certainly enrollment and space and buildings and really working collaboratively and thinking creatively about that. So I think this is a really nice opportunity for me to share some of those guidelines because it can sometimes be easy to think, oh, it's just preschool, do we really even need it? Or, you know, like, could, can we put some more kids in there? But really, this is a special education program. And so specifically for these substantially separate classrooms, of which we have three at Cunningham, in two of the rooms, the maximum number of students based on the square footage of the rooms and DESI guidelines is nine. And in two of those rooms, our current enrollment is seven in one room and eight in the other. The third room is much smaller, resulting in smaller amount of square footage. So the maximum number of students we can have in that room is five and we have five in that room right now. So that kind of just gives you a good sense of like why we have the preschool in the first place, the guidelines we are adhering to, and then current enrollment. So if you can do the math quickly, that leaves three slots open should someone come down the pike this year or a few kiddos come down the pike this year that might require that type of setting in the full day. In the integrated program, again, we have different regulations to adhere to, but this is more of a ratio we're thinking about and talking about. So it's 49 to 51, meaning that 49% of the students in these integrated classrooms have individualized education plans or IEPs. 51% of the students do not. So that's kind of the ratio that we need to make sure we are true to in these programs. In a general sense, the maximum number of kids we can have in those rooms is 15, using that ratio. Right now, we currently have 22 open seats for students in the integrated programs at Cunningham for students on IEPs, which is a comfortable number for me right now, given the information that I have kind of projecting for this year as compared to like historical data about how many referrals we have from early intervention at this point in time and things like that. So I think it's nice to kind of have these things in the back of your mind as you think about Cunningham because it does make Cunningham a little bit unique, you know? Every school kind of has their thing and I don't think preschool is necessarily Cunningham's thing, I would love to think that it is. But it, it plays a big part in the school, you know, it has a really large presence, it's a really important program, it is a special program. These students are three, four, and five years old and their families are like entrusting us with their babies as they start their academic career in the Milton Public Schools. So we feel lucky and fortunate to be a part of the Cunningham community. And I could, I know that we're on a time crunch, I could talk all night about space and numbers, but more important than that is the pictures you can see, thank you, Glenn and Garth, of the faces behind the numbers. So you see just some preschoolers here, all from Cunningham, from, ranging from our integrated program to our substantially separate program. And they're doing things like building early literacy skills. Phonological awareness is a really important factor in preschool in both programs. We see them building a love of reading. In the third picture from the left, you see a communication board that's being used outside on our playground. So big thanks to the Milton Foundation for Education and the Mouse Pals Foundation that allowed us to actually get a large vinyl communication board for every playground in each of our public schools. So it's a big deal because a lot of our students use iPads to communicate and this allows them to communicate more freely on the playground. And even for students who don't use it, it's a lesson in inclusion. So again, just kind of like tying into the whole theme of Cunningham, it really is an inclusive place and a happy place and preschool kind of like adds into that. So we're, we're happy to be a part of Cunningham and I'll pass it over back to, oh.
I'm gonna change, could you go back to the slide before and the charts?
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, so as I, I just wanted to emphasize some of the structures that we're allowed to put in place, but thank you, Brian. Great. So specifically around the counseling and the student support, thinking about how we're able to use our adjustment counselor to actually go into each classroom and do lessons. So for this month, she's actually doing anti-bullying lessons in every single classroom. She's differentiating it to the appropriate levels and the teachers are going to work with her during those lessons and that wouldn't be possible if we didn't have time for that planning to take place. So again, the flexibility that having our own specialists for each, for three of the specialists really supports us with how we use the staff that we already have. And the student support works the same way. We need to provide coverage for those teachers to go to those meetings to talk about students and how, you know, what things we can do to support them with the different resources that we have in the building. And again, we, the coverage piece is what now enables those meetings to be stronger and happen well. Thanks. I'm gonna turn it over to Andy, who's gonna take us through our student.
Thank you, Dr. Redden. So as you can see, our school improvement goals overall align directly with the district's strategic plan. So I'm gonna be taking the first two, so I'll be talking to the safe and supportive schools as well as personalized learning and what we do at Cunningham to support those specific goals. So if we can go to the next slide, we'll start talking about safe and supportive schools at Cunningham. So it's no secret that students learn best when they feel safe, they feel supported and they feel heard. And that's the exact culture we want to create and we feel that we've strived to create over the last, certainly the, the five years that I've been there, but well before that. And it's through a lot of hard work, it's daily work that, that contributes to that overall culture and feeling of inclusion. And that includes the collaboration model that we have within Cunningham. And kind of going off of what Dr. Redden was saying about our school adjustment counselor, Courtney Henrik, that first mission statement that, that we brought up earlier was really talking about, you know, how we emphasize positive behaviors within our building and how we, we create that growth mindset for all of our students. And Mrs. Henrik has really spent the month of October going into classes, making sure that students understand that growth mindset and the students are able to speak to it. In fact, this past week, we had our first positivity awards, which is a celebration of all the positive behaviors that have happened throughout our school. And students actually were there presenting about what they could do, what they could do already, but also what they couldn't do. And they can speak to what's next for them, what's a challenge they've created for themselves and what's a goal they've created so that they can grow beyond what their, their current, I guess, ceiling is at this point or current capabilities. And so, you know, that's what we're always trying, striving to do, to create an environment where students are going to take risks, that they're going to try something new. And, you know, as you look through some of the strategies, those are things that we have in place already or we're trying to implement for the 23, 24 calendar year. Talking to those, obviously it, it takes a collaboration between the families and the community as a, as a whole in Milton and the staff and students within our school. And we feel as though through our PTO, we have a really strong collaboration, working together, bringing different events, including an anti-bullying assembly that will happen next month. So if you guys want to do some dancing, we'll, we'll send that date to you. It's a, it's a great assembly that, that was a lot of fun last year. We, we also, if you look at number three as our bullet, you know, we talk about students a lot. We talk about individual students. We talk about what their needs are, what their strengths are, and what are some goals that we can set for them. And that's done at behavioral health, so talking about the social emotional learning piece. And then also at our SST, our student support teams that get together each week and we talk about very specific student data within the classroom that the teachers see, that the special educators see, that the staff throughout the school see. They come together and they're, they talk specifically about those students. So again, it's a very collaborative effort that creates a safe and supportive school environment, but it's something that we're really proud of. but it's something that we're really proud of. And then if we go to the next slide, how are we measuring progress throughout this year? Really, like I've already talked about a lot, data is something that we look at very closely and very intently in a lot of different ways. So we take, again, the attendance data, the survey data that's filled out through SEL surveys and a number of other surveys that we send out, but it's also looking at incident reports and office referrals that happen to make sure, you know, we're doing all we can to support students in a positive way. And I've talked through most of the other things, and I'll just say that, you know, one addition that's not on here, that's something that we do that's unique, I think, a little bit to Cunningham is, you know, we have our cougar paw tickets. Unfortunately, I don't have one on me, but anyone can recognize another student for their positive behaviors, and that's pretty widespread, I think, throughout Milton. We also have a book vending machine that our PTO and through our MFE, we actually were given a grant opportunity, and it's in our building now. And it's a way that we've kind of combined the two efforts because we can give out cougar paws to our students, and special staff each day has a coin on the back of it. And if they give it to a student unsolicited, could be anyone throughout the building, it could be cafeteria staff, custodians, it could be teachers, it could be Dr. Redden and I. If we give those tickets out to specific students, they have a coin on the back, they can earn a book. So again, we're trying to promote doing things unsolicited in a very positive way and thinking about others beyond yourself. And also trying to develop a love of reading while at the same time. The second goal, as we switch gears, is to personalized learning. And when we're thinking about personalized learning, you've probably heard a lot about personalized learning, this group. You know, we continue to try to develop a more personalized learning approach at Cunningham, and really comes down to understanding those individual student needs, their backgrounds, their interests, and what their learning styles are. What are really going to motivate those students? So you can see on the left side, we have a number of different strategies in place. Some of those we continue to evolve and continue to try to get better at. So the first one is really thinking about the design of curriculum through that UDL lens, thinking about what are the overall objectives that we're trying to achieve, and then designing those lessons with those end goals in mind so that each student can be successful. Not everyone teaching everyone the same way, but thinking about how we can give students choice and give students overall agency that they're making their own choice and their voice is heard so that they're demonstrating their success in their own way. And one of the real strong initiatives that I'm excited about this year is that Erin Moore in that second one, that professional development opportunities, Erin Moore is going to be a consultant that's going to be working with us specifically on personalized learning. She's coming to Cunningham on two dates, and I have those written down, actually, the end of October and the beginning of January. And so she'll be working at Cunningham specifically with our staff and spending a full day with us. And that will include coaching. So she'll be going into classrooms. She'll be modeling lessons for specific staff. And then she'll be going through lessons and how to design those lessons to really think about each student and what their needs are. So I think that's a great opportunity for us this year, which I think is a much-needed improvement. And then if we think about how we're measuring personalized learning and how we're measuring how we're doing it in the personalized learning approach, again, it continues to be, what's the overall student engagement? Are we, through our classroom observations, what are we seeing in the classroom? But then also in that second piece, it's really thinking about how are students viewing themselves and the success that they're having in the classroom? So are students creating their own goals? Are they seeing where they are right now and what those goals are that they can achieve? And are they trying to achieve those goals? And are they currently or constantly progress monitoring that process for them? And then if we switch to the next slide, I'll speak to professional development a little bit more and assessment. So this is a busy slide. The outside in white is the curriculum that we use throughout Cunningham. Nothing has really changed this year on the outside, so I'm really gonna speak just to the middle piece, which is what you're gonna look for if you're in the building. And this is how we're tracking personalized learning, what you'll see and how we approach personalized learning at Cunningham. And that's, again, continuing with that data piece. Data plays an important role in all of our goals, but thinking about common planning time and how we analyze the data and how we use that common planning time to create dashboards for our entire student population and dive a little bit more deeply into the needs of each student. We have M-Class is a brand-new screener tool this year for, it's replaced our Lexia Rapid Screener. So that's our reading DIBELS model. We have iReady for math. We obviously have MCAS data, SEL data. And then we also have end-of-unit assessments and other assessments that are being done within the classroom. So we use all that information to understand each student. Student choice, again, I talked to Ari a little bit about that. And then, you know, I've talked about student ownership and accountability for their own progress and monitoring that. And then again, on top of it, the last thing I'll just touch upon is not only do we have PD opportunities this year for personalized learning, but we also had a grant that we were given this year across the district. So we can do a lot more diving into Math this year, which was our new math curriculum last year for grades one through five. And that will involve a number of modeling and coaching opportunities for our staff to be able to dive into it a lot more deeply and, again, design modules as a whole. So a lot of great opportunities in this, and I'm excited about the work that we have ahead of us.
Thank you, Andy.
That was great.
So I'm gonna talk about equity in learning, and you'll see that a lot of the bullets here are very similar to what we had last year. So I wanna focus on just two. And I wanna talk about, build right off of what Mr. Young just shared with us around how we use data. And then I wanna talk about thinking about the structure of the classroom. And I mentioned how we have a lot more flexibility to meet students where they are due to the work that the teachers are able to do collaboratively together. So I emphasized from the beginning of the year that every single classroom at the Cunningham, starting in the preschool, has more than just a homeroom teacher working with the students in those rooms. So at any given point of the day, there are multiple adults in the classroom working with variety of learners for different purposes, and every single student should benefit from that work, whether it's the teacher now having the flexibility to sort of work with different groups or individual students, or whether they're able to sort of share students amongst the grade levels and do more tiered sort of intervention work in different subject areas. But again, that starts with the planning and sort of thinking about what opportunities and what environments we can create. And we want to start this inclusive learning environment as early as possible so that as they continue to go through Cunningham, they are working, they are learning to work together in these small groups, maybe without a teacher, and learning from one another and learning that students learn differently and knowing that that's actually a great thing when you're starting to put something together collectively to have different ways to sort of get there. And the less rigid we can be around like this one avenue to sort of show us what you know, the more, you know, universal our sort of expectations will be around sort of what they are able to sort of share with us in the end. So that is sort of the work that we're doing around, sort of making sure that we are, I think, valuing the different learners in our classrooms, regardless of if it's a collaborative classroom, regardless of how many adults are in there, knowing that all students have their strengths in areas where they want to grow. We promoted that in September with, and we highlighted that at our assembly, but we want to continue sort of recognizing that work so students always push themselves and work to achieve in areas all throughout the year. And now I wanna sort of move into the data piece of it because then we're gonna start talking about how we look at data. So first, we have to share the data. So we already had a staff meeting where we shared some of the MCAS results. And that's where I'm gonna, you know, do a time check after I go through MCAS so we can start doing internal assessments after you have that information as well. But the MCAS data this year, if you go to the next slide. So last year, we were the 93rd percentile. This year, we're in the 92nd percentile, which, you know, if you leave it there, it's like, what does that mean? Where, what did we get worse? Did we get, you know, what's going on here? So when you think about explaining this to teachers and knowing that they work hard and that they've, you know, 92nd percentile is still very high marked in the state, we need to look at where students were performing successfully. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see that that was very clear to highlight. So if you look at the points that we achieved with all students, we are three out of four, so for English arts for all students. But you can see for our lowest-performing students on the MCAS, that's where we want to focus our efforts as far as making sure that we are looking at that 20% that population of students and seeing, are they in our intervention groups that we are sort of talking about this year? Are they in our, you know, are they receiving support in a way that's gonna help them make gains this year? So now that we can identify those students and we know where, you know, even as a high-performing school, where we need to focus our efforts to grow, I think that that's really the work that we did with teachers, to name those students, to not look at students sort of these data points, but to name those students and talk about what we're doing for those individual students because we see that everywhere else, we're sort of the one point or got all the points. So it's hard to sort of identify like where you wanna target your area of focus when you are performing high consistently now for two years. So that is sort of the work that we talked about, and that is sort of the appreciation that we have our reading teachers, our SST teams to sort of think about sort of that flexible grouping and scheduling so that the educators can do what they do best, which is work with the students in the classroom every single day. So again, while we are excited about the data and we're happy to sort of share the MCAS, if we did have time for the M-Class data, which is these slides after the question slide, even the next one, you'll see that it's particularly in third grade, if you look at sort of where they're starting as far as like grade level, where they're starting at each of the grades. And if you go to the next one, just so I can finish with the iReady. One more. Yep. And you can see here, and this, when we shared this with site council, a great question came up, like, how does this compare to the data from last year at this time in the fall? It actually compares well. We actually have more students on grade level starting this year than we did last year. But of course, we want this data to show more students on grade level towards the end of the year. So that, again, is, you know, the fall data, the data cycles that we're gonna go through with the teachers, but this is sort of what we're putting out there to sort of make sure we know who we're talking about when we're looking at data so that we can make the most gains with them. Okay. Thank you for our presentation. Again, if you go back to the question slide, you'll see that awesome link right there where if you want to watch the amazing video that Mr. Young put together, it's worth the 12 minutes and 50 seconds.
He always chides me about how long the videos are.
Thank you.
Thank you so, so much for the presentation and obviously all the work that it represents that you're doing every day at Cunningham. Does anyone have questions or comments?
I'm gonna make a comment as a former Cunningham parent. I just wanna say it was really great to see this presentation. I really liked how you kind of defined the pillars and kind of built upon last year's presentation. And I really also appreciate that you're looking at the data, but also looking at the kids as kids. And I think that's what we often forget sometimes when we get caught up in the data. So I really love that you're, gosh, I feel like I'm gonna cry. But I really appreciate that because I felt that as a parent there. So I, it really shows through the work that you're doing there, and I appreciate that very much, and my kids miss you every day.
Aww.
Thank you. We miss them.
As a current Cunningham parent of two kids, I hear amazing things every day about how they go to different classrooms and work with different teachers on different subjects, including social studies and math and English language arts. So I really appreciate all those efforts and flexibility and space that you, as leaders, give to the teachers who is working with the students. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I feel like I have to chime in.
You don't have to. There's another, another one here.
Certainly. No, I think I appreciate the presentation a lot. And I appreciate also how you're utilizing data in the end to bring it back to what are we doing for the students? I think that's been very clear, and I know I've seen it in terms of myself personally, in terms of my kiddo, who like math is definitely one area that challenges her because she's a creative spirit and that side of her brain works really well the other. She's like, wait a minute. But I know I've seen the growth and my, I think, one story that I would share that I think speaks a lot of volumes to the work that you're doing in the building is that she says, look, I know math. I can do math. It just takes me a little longer, which I really love, right? It's not about saying I'm turned off by it, but it really is an understanding that we all learn differently and that she needs to work at it a little harder. And it doesn't mean that she can't do it. And I think that's messaging that she's heard all along. And I think, secondly, I would say that the interactions among the kids that I've seen too has been superb. Like, I just love the way they've learned to sort of speak about what they're encountering with one another, and that says to me about the culture that you're setting in the school as well, where kids are seeing, kids feel like they can troubleshoot things. And I know because, you know, you listen to the conversations that happen in the car as you're driving them around, you're like, okay. But it's really great. And so I appreciate all that you're doing at Cunningham. I feel lucky every day that that's where she goes.
Thank you. Thank you.
The pressure's on me.
I've said many times, my children love going to school every day. I can't say it any better than endowed and Selena and Anna have. Love, love your school and all the staff inside it and how they make them feel and how they feel seen and cared for and loved. And that's really, you know, and challenged as well, right? Those are the things you want from a school. So fantastic, and really appreciate the presentation. I do have a couple of questions on the presentation if I can. Just so from the iReady piece, just to be clear for my owner understanding how to read that, the yellow data is essentially that like if a first grader is in yellow, they're performing at a kindergarten reading level, which is kind of what you would expect at the beginning of first grade, right? And so by the end of the year, the hope is that that graph is as green as possible. But at the start of the year, it'd be very surprising if that graph was green. I mean, everybody's kind of a grade ahead, right? Is that a fair way of understanding it?
Yes.
Great. I just wanna make that clear for anybody who's kind of looking at the data and things like that. DIBELS, I know DIBELS is right, a state now mandate. Are parents getting a report from the DIBELS? Is that something families can expect to see in terms of their children's? I think they have to get it twice a year based upon the state guidance.
So obviously, we have access to that information. We can share it at any point. We have not at this point because we were still analyzing the information, making sure that all the tests were or assessments were completed. But that data will be accessible probably at the beginning of next week. I don't know if that's a district-wide policy right now to share that information with families or if that's something that's still being discussed. But it's certainly something that we are more than happy. I think it's really important that families understand where their students are and that they're involved in the learning process with their children. So we want to be as transparent as possible with all information that we have about your students. And so if that, if that's not a district-wide policy where we share it or school-wide policy, it's certainly something we can provide.
Yeah, we'll be district-wide.
District-wide.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Great.
We'll be talking about that more when we discuss curriculum.
And I'm not gonna belabor the point. So I'm gonna focus on the thing that I much, very much appreciate. When you talked about knowing who the kids are that are in the red and the shaded red and that you are making progress and you can document it in your data, we have come a very long way in the Milton Public Schools that we even have the data to have this conversation. And I appreciate the fact that you're using it this way. Thank you for coming tonight and your thoughtful presentation.
Thank you.
I just have one clarifying question and one sort of, I just want, I really appreciate Ms. Butler, like, the context around preschool because you're totally right. That is something so unique and special about Cunningham and especially in the context of our townwide discussions about space. You know, we know how important that is for folks to understand how and why we use space the way that we do. Just as you were sharing sort of the details of the basically strategy that you have to use to sort of put your students in different rooms, holding space for folks that may come in. I just, I'm not sure everybody listening may be aware. I think something unique about preschool and therefore about Cunningham is that you have kids starting throughout the year when they I think something unique about preschool and therefore about Cunningham is that you have kids starting throughout the year when they turn three. So that's like a little bit different that it's not just everyone walks in the first day of school in September, right? So when you talk about reserving capacity in these classrooms, it's because you anticipate children turning three anytime from September to June. And the day they turn three, they can come and start their career in Milton public schools in Cunningham. So is that fair to say?
Very fair. Yep. Thank you for clarifying that and adding that on. That's exactly why we, we don't fill all of the classes to the point because legally we do have to provide those services as students turn three. And of course, students are turning three all over the course of the year. So we try to be as proactive as we can with observing just the right number of spots. And I think that that's something that's a collaborative effort. And yeah, something really important for the public to understand for sure.
Thanks so much. And my quick clarifying on the table that you presented with the numbers, who are, who we are at Cunningham? Just to make sure I was reading that right, the columns are grade levels. And so then are you, the numbers of students sort of going down the column, are the numbers of students receiving intervention support by those individual educators? Okay, that's really great because, and I appreciate how you were talking about you have all the time, like small groups happening and different, you know, things that are going on, which may include those interventions and potentially also just groupings and things that are going on in, within like the normal course of the classroom teaching, right? I appreciated that. I don't know if I've seen that type of breakdown before, but that's really helpful to know like the resources that school committee allocates to these FTEs. You know, what's the impact? Like, who are the kids? How many kids at what grade levels are they able to do that work? So that's actually really great to be able to see that.
And also just to kind of build off what, what you were kind of thinking, it's, it's not just that they're impacting those students currently, but they're also, once those students go through that six week intervention period, they're going on to new students, that same number of students that they can reach at a different grade level or maybe at that next level of need. And so it, they're impacting a lot of students. So we have a math interventionist that's brand new to Cunningham specifically this year. And it's going to provide a lot of support for our younger students this year, specifically in the area of math. So, you know, we're excited about it. And obviously we've had a lot of reading support in the building, but it, it impacts a lot of students.
That's great. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to keep going? My report?
Yeah, I guess. Yeah. Thank you all so much for.
Thank you.
Coming. Yeah, sure. Carry on because I know we've got.
Next item in the super tense report is the spring data presentation and curriculum update. As we've talked about, this is kind of the beginning of, of working to consolidate all of the information, all the work that's happening around curriculum and providing a, a little bit of a deeper dive into the kind of the why behind what we're doing, the goal eventually. And we're not there yet. This is just kind of like bringing the information together tonight. The goal eventually is to have the, the information around the work we're doing and the data that we're, that, that work is informing and moving connected together. So that as we're, I mean, this, this is our reflective cycle so that we don't continue to do things and don't look at are the things that we're doing impacting what we do. One of the challenges with MCAS, looking at MCAS is we see, you know, grade four went up, grade five went down. And when we talk about it as a team, sometimes we can't tell you, and this is why. So looking at, at more formative assessment, building a system where we have common assessment will enable us to, to, to better see the connection between the work and the outcomes. And some of this work, as you all know, is, is years long to push some of these, some, some of these outcomes. And we want to make sure that we can kind of see a steady progression towards where we're headed. So I won't say more now because I want to let the, the team share the, the information. So we have four folks that are going to be sharing. And V, I believe is going to be starting out.
Is there an expectation that we are listening for today and will ask questions at a later date? Because I realize there's a lot of content they're covering.
There's a lot of content. I mean, I, I think tonight, questions would be great. If you had questions, what we can continue this. And I think it, talking in context with committee work too, I think that's something to talk about in terms of how does the curriculum advisory committee take maybe some of those questions? Kind of go to that level and then come back. So that's another thing for us to, I think, think about and talk about.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess I'm gonna get us going and then Dr. McKinney and the curriculum team will kind of fill in the rest plans on what the district is planning on doing this year. So I'm kind of glad that you got a chance to hear from the Cunningham first before we do this kind of MCAS takeaway. Cause I always feel like I come in and I give the very high level 50,000 foot view of what's going on in the district. And you all want to know like, well, how does it play out day by day in the school? What are teachers doing? What are students doing? And I feel like the site council presentation gave you a really good feel for that versus what I'm gonna do now. Which is gonna take us back up to the 50,000 foot view. But just to remind everybody, last time when I was here, I talked about us kind of making and seeing that recovery in our ELA and our math data and the really good news story about our, our youngest testers, our third grader, really achieving a lot in ELA and math. And we're hoping that that's a really solid foundation for our district to build on and to move on. So I said that I would come back and give you some more analysis. So I can go to the next slide. So some more good news. All Milton schools have met exceeded or made substantial progress on the accountability targets that are set by DESI every year. And these accountability targets include measures such as MCAS achievement, growth, attendance for high school, high school graduation rates and advanced coursework, as well as progress on English learner proficiency. And I'm glad to report to the school committee here today that Collicott and Glover are two of 66 schools recognized in the whole Commonwealth as schools of recognition for their high achievement and high growth this past year. So a lot of kudos to the schools, the hard work that the teachers, the students and the parents put in to make sure that our students get everything that they need to continue on that track of, you know, high achievement. Okay. So next slide. So this is kind of an overview of where all our schools are. And as you can see on the accountability percentile, that's how the, the state is comparing all the schools in the same grade band to each other to their peers. So all the elementary schools are compared to each other, all the middle schools are compared to each other, so on and so forth. And as you can see with the high accountability percentile here, our schools in Milton's are some of the best in the Commonwealth. We have a very high accountability percentile. And you see these similar numbers year after year. So high, high performing district. And we continue to make progress towards the improvement goals that the district set for us. Next slide. Okay. So last time I said that I would come back with some data about recovery and the pace of recovery for our district. And so this, this slide is basically just breaking down by grade level, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations on the ELA MCAS. Okay. For the last four years of testing. And in the gray column, you can see where our district numbers fall and as compared to the state numbers. And green are, green percentages are where we made gains back, right? And red are, you know, where there might have been some decline. So comparing our district number versus the state number, you can see down the line that at almost all our grade level, we're making progress back and we're making more progress than the state is. And then if you are looking at the last two columns, that's comparing the numbers back to 2019, prior to the pandemic. So when you look at these numbers, you see that obviously there's still a ways to go to get back to the achievement level that we all were before, prior to the pandemic. But when you look at our numbers versus the state number, in a lot of cases, we're outpacing the state. And this kind of overview can really show us where we need to put our effort, you know? So I'm looking at this chart and I, I would say that grade four ELA is probably an area where we need to focus a lot more attention on and try to figure out what is happening and what we need to do.
So a quick question about that particular line item, did the state change the standards at all during this time period?
I mean.
You don't have to. He's, your scarf probably might, would have the better idea.
In terms of the curriculum framework standards?
Okay. So I'm gonna move us to the next slide, which is talking about math. Okay? So same kind of analysis, you see for the most part, our math in different grade level is also making more gains back than the state. In some cases, not so. But then you look over at the four year, actually five year because 2020, we didn't have a test. So it's really five years. You can see what the differential are between 2023 and 2019. And again, you know, looking down the, the numbers of our district number versus the state, we're ahead of the state in a lot of cases in almost all the grade level. And this kind of data, like this is how we figure out where the improvement areas need to be and where the focus attention need to be. So next slide. This is looking at the district science MCAS numbers. And you see we have less tested grades here. But in the ones that we do, eighth grade, we see outpacing the state. And then when you look at the four year or five year rather differential, Milton is actually performing higher than when we were before the pandemic. So we're, we're back to that level for science. And if we can do it for science, then there is a lot of hope that we can do the same for ELA and math. So this slide is really talking about, you know, where we are in comparison to some of our peers. And every year DESI produces a list of comparable peer districts based on our demographics and our total enrollment and our special population. So this is the list, the latest list that DESI provided to us. So I picked a couple of districts off of this list. And we've also pulled data from some of our neighboring districts, just so that we have some geographical neighbors on the comparison as well. And if you move to the next slide, this is the breakdown of how Milton compared to the state. And also compared to, you know, the first three districts, those are our comparable districts according to DESI based on demographic and special population. And then the last five districts are our geographic neighbors. And this is the breakdown of the special population in each of the district, the per pupil expenditure, because I think that's an important indication. If we're comparing district to district, like we also need to know how much resources we're putting into our student in each district, right? And then down below, you kind of see the, the performance, the 2023 MCAS performance for each of the districts. So according to these stats, you see that Milton is really performing on the same, in the same range as a lot of these districts that we're being compared to, either, you know, by geography or by DESI, special populations and enrollment. So we're not the highest performer in every category, but we're also not the lowest. But one thing that I do want to point out is we do have one of the lowest per pupil expenditure. That's even lower than the state average. So that's definitely something that we need to keep in mind as we think about resources and allocation for our students. And then lastly, I just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, MCAS is one measure, but it is a standardized measure that the state uses to benchmark performance for every school in the state. Without MCAS, it would be hard to kind of compare performance between anybody. And so even though it's not a perfect measure in, in any way, and it doesn't necessarily capture learning perfectly at the individual level, because you can imagine if your child just woke up that morning on the wrong side of the bed or your child is not a good test taker, they might not necessarily do well on the assessment. But at the population level, it's a very good tool to use to kind of gauge overall performance for the year. Okay. Secondly, the data here represent only our second data point post pandemic. So last year DESI made a really, you know, big point about making sure that we understand that 2022 is really the reset for the baseline. I know that a lot of us are looking back to 2019 because that's where we want to get back to, right? But 2022, last year is really the first point of data post pandemic. And this year is the second point of data. And from the first to second point, we're already see a trend, you know, gaining, increasing. And so there's really hopeful signs for, for us in the district that we are past the worst of it already. And the more investment that we make into the district and into our student, it can only go up from here. So, and we recognize that even though there are a lot of gains, there are still areas of improvement to focus on, specifically on the achievement gaps of our, some of our subgroup students. Because these students experienced the most unfinished learning during the pandemic. But we're also seeing signs that they are making progress back. They are making gains, it's just not as big a gain as their peer group. So they're still behind, you know? One good news story that I did want to point out is that our students with disability actually surpassed their pre pandemic achievement level. So the amount of attention, of personalized attention that the district has invested in our special education student and that's paying off. And we're seeing their gains. So we're hoping that, you know, everything will just continue to rise from here. And at this point, I can either take questions on the data or I can turn it over to Dr. McKinney to talk more about our curriculum plan for this year and what we're planning on doing.
Thank you so much for taking the time to walk through this in such detail over two meetings. I do have a question for Dr. Burrows on slide nine, especially when we start looking at the grade. Um especially when we start looking at the grade ten ELA and math and science for subgroups. When you have the opportunity to go to the high school, I would love to find out, I'd love to hear from you. Um anything that the students have to share, especially if you have the opportunity to speak to students in subgroups. Um because some of these numbers, I I can honestly say I'm I'm surprised by because there's some consistency you expect to see, even the ups and downs at grade level. But I'm really surprised to see what's happening with some of the subgroups and um would love to hear any feedback you get from the students themselves.
What have you heard from your own household, the kind of assessment and how students are approaching it?
The interesting thing is, um the one thing that I have heard from both teachers who've approached me privately and my student, my kids are um attendance is an issue. And tardiness is an issue, but they don't talk about it from a subgroup perspective, either kids or teachers. Um the challenge is, is there a compelling reason to be here and to put forth effort? I can't say that that explains what we're seeing in subgroups. Um I'm very much a believer in data analysis and asking very good questions because otherwise, by anecdote, you can make a lot of inappropriate assumptions. But I'd love to hear directly from these students, it'd be, you know. It will not be a representative sample, but anything is helpful.
Yeah, I was gonna say the subgroup data does make you.
Doesn't doesn't match what you'd expect to see.
No, no, no. And some of it's trending lower compared to sort of the story that we had, the snapshot that we had last year.
Which, what what is that?
Which um document are you looking at? Sorry, this is.
So it's the same one.
Quarterly Curriculum Update.
Yeah.
And it's slide nine.
Oh.
I'm looking at the wrong version again.
Yeah. You're not the only one, sorry.
I was looking at the MCAS results. I mean, they had similar information.
It's so funny because we're all, the people who are saying this are all on Macs, maybe it's us.
I just had a question, um and I've noted, I know we kind of touched on this last year. Um I had two questions, actually. My first one was, I know when we talked about neighboring districts, um I went back to the data from last year and there was a different districts that we would use. Is there a reason why we kind of changed that up this year?
Yeah, so DESI, are you referring to the?
No, the geographic location.
The geographic neighbors? Um no, just representative.
Okay.
Sample.
And then have we looked at like um districts that don't have like as much of a tax base as we do, like commercial tax base? Like to kind of see where we fall as well, because I know some of them had more businesses and stuff that we don't have.
I think that's a good point.
Yeah.
You can probably go back and add in some without the tax base to mirror kind of.
You know, just to kind of give us an idea. And then my other question was um was the um subgroup, the Asian subgroup. I noticed that um I think it was grade ten for math. They had, I think at the start of before COVID, they were the hundred percent meeting or exceeding expectations. And then they came back up to ninety-five percent last year, and then they dropped down to seventy-five percent. And like I know there, you know, things go up and down here and there, but just I'm just trying to, like, if you could help me understand, like, when, why, like, big jumps happen, and I know it happens in other subgroups too. So um what could we be doing, is it something that we could be doing differently or like, what is it, you know, like?
Or the N.
Yes, so I was just gonna say that. So one of the reasons that you see such wide swing between some of these subgroups is they're much smaller. So when, you know, out of, for example, um let me see, I think the Asian subgroup in tenth grade only has twenty students.
Okay.
So, you know.
Okay.
If it's one of twenty and your performance drops, then the the swing is much wider than if you're out of a hundred student or two hundred students.
Oh, that's really, that's really good information to have. Thank you.
Um actually, I wanted to ask, so you said um in terms of the peer district, because this is a conversation that we have every year, like who are our, you know, goal standard peer district that we really are comparable to.
Right.
Um and I would love to hear some ideas around this table.
This is something that we talk.
I hear a lot of names thrown out, but I just want to make sure that, you know, if if there are some that that folks around this table feel like that is someone that we should be looking to and and looking at. I would love to know what they are.
I will say that when we had the budget presentation last year and the year before, because of the data that was being presented, we could have a lot more districts for comparative purposes. And I think each one of us has a different district in mind.
Right.
I've, after looking at the data for two years on average per spend, the reality is, we just spend a lot less, like just the reality is you cannot, you can't ask for more when you don't have the resources. But in this case, maybe it ends up being that we come up with our standard list and that for the presentation purposes, you know, you picked a handful that are appropriate, and then maybe in the appendix, there's more. But, you know, if you put what was in the budget presentation, we, I I can tell you with my readers, I I couldn't read that. But this is a great start, um because you're getting, the reality is, the story wouldn't be very much, in my opinion, it wouldn't be very different. We spend less and there's a variety of outcomes that really can't be explained easily, it just.
And I kind of want to just add on to that, which is like when I went on the school tours a couple of weeks ago, it was really nice to kind of just see how learning has changed. You know, there are so many, so many different services that are offered and maybe ten, twenty years ago was different, but now it's, it has changed a lot. So I think those, that there is a valid point there in terms of spending and costs and all of those things. So uh but it was really eye opening for me to kind of see it firsthand.
I think just thinking about, sorry, um just thinking about peer districts, the I I think people have a conception like um Beth said about, you know, we all have different comparisons that we make. I think the high needs percentage is an important one.
Yeah.
Which is why that's, the DESI comparables are, that is the metric they use. Um but there are lots of other factors too, so I I think it's helpful to see that comparison and also just, you know, potentially like a comparison across the whole metro area too, as opposed to just a chunk.
Thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to introduce yourselves too for the, for the audience?
Yeah. I'm Danielle, one of the Director of Student Services.
Um and I'm Zakiya Jarrett, I'm the interim Director of Diversity, Equity, and inclusion.
And I'm Garth McKinney, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and HR. Uh the next part of our presentation um hopes to tie together the work from the MCAS analysis and the results and the work that's going on to continually improve student outcomes across the district. Just get this up and going here. So of course, this work is tied to our strategic plan that if we continually implement our strategic plan and improve our student experience, we'll increase student outcomes and ultimately have students ready to succeed in college and career.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit of about the current work that we're doing, both in our ELA and mathematics for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um so for our K to eight leadership, um our K to eight literacy, um the team has developed, uh the the coordinator has developed a leadership team, including multiple stakeholders. Um and the main goal and purpose of that is to really use student data, staff surveys to really drive the change in curriculum assessment and instruction and culture related to literacy. Um they'll all speak subcommittees connected to this to help advance some of that work as well and work directly with the literacy director. Um a- as it relates to um special education, um there's going to be ongoing assessment of supplemental curriculum to integrate some of our skills deficits with curriculum standards to help close that gap that we're seeing. So what is uh what we have now is great new curriculum that's being introduced to um students across across the board, across the district. Um and there isn't really a supplemental piece for our special educators to be able to drive their instruction in those pull-out classes. So doing a lot of that work around the beginning ELA with the special education population. Um at the high school level, they're making a lot of um advancements and changes to some of their programming to help with that equity and learning piece and personalization, um including um expanding the African American literature to, from one semester to a full year, um and then introducing two new courses. One's, one that I think is like really cool, and I feel like I really want to join, um True Crime, the artist storytelling, um and then Exploring Nature. Um raising the number of options for seniors to ten. Um another piece that I also think is very cool is the dual enrollment for juniors and seniors um to run next year to enable students to earn credit through Quincy College, which I think is expanding across the state. Um a lot of towns and and cities are starting to use college courses um as students and their high school careers. And then ongoing collaboration um with a focus on each English course unit as they're revised, updating and reshaping into consistent online formatting um to ma- to meet the NIESC expectations. And then as Andy mentioned during the Cunningham presentation, um the district has been awarded a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to enhance the intro um into math curriculum for grades one through five. So there's going to be various professional development opportunities for teachers and the specifics of how these funds will be uh are still being finalized. There's also, again, um just like ELA, um there's going to be some assessment of supplemental curriculum for math. We're really holding, honing in on ELA math um because that is where we see a lot of the bigger gaps and also how they integrate into science, social studies, and other areas of study. Um the new math courses at the high school uh will also include some honors courses, which is really great to help um with some of that personalized learning, helping some of those advanced students um push their brands a little bit further. Uh so Algebra II, Honors Precal, calculus, and AP Precal calculus. And then in addition to honors statistics, also um honors precalculus, honors calculus will also have the opportunity to earn dual enrollment credits with Quincy College.
Will we go on? Mind if I ask some questions about the ELA and the math curriculum? Um one of the things that came up last year during the secondary ELA presentation was that a firm was hired to help with calibration efforts, especially reading assignments across the high school grade levels. Um is there anything you can, you can share about the status of that and what were the outcomes or what have you seen?
Say that one more time, there was a firm hired?
There was a, an agency that was brought in to work with the high school ELA teachers to have a common set of expectations, I think it was specifically around writing, to ensure that the grade, there was grading consistency across classes. But that was like literally one of the reasons they were brought in.
Yep.
Is there any update on how that went or?
We can get you an update on that. Um writing was an area of focus at the secondary level, six to twelve. So if you want specifics on the writing work that was done and the common work in the ELA department, then I can share that with you.
Okay. And in terms of this elementary math curriculum implementation, is there any feedback from the teachers about how they think it went?
Overall, well, but it was a lot. Um and that's why we applied for that grant, got resources, and then the, they're kind of like teacher leaders are going to be the ones to go for additional training, they went this summer, and they're going to bring that back to the group and kind of facilitate that at the grade level group. So Brian Seelick, the math director, is facilitating all that, but there's still some learning to happen there for the teachers so they can pass it on to the kids.
Okay, um so talking about uh world language, one through twelve. Um for our French immersion students, we are implementing the IDAPAL, I must be French, uh early literacy screener.
Expander stuff, so you could.
It's true. Um and so this is important because it is a way to assess our students in first through second grade in the same way that our, uh in the French program, the same way that we're assessing our students in the English program. So it's the French version of DIBELS, um giving us really important literacy data for our early learners. And if you want to see more, you can click on here. It's it's a good, that's a good program.
In K to twelve science, all four elementary schools are working on Project Lead the Way. We have a grant that supports that from the One Eight Foundation. Um we're expanding that and supporting the funding across uh some of the schools there. And we'll be training a lot of the dis- uh district teachers this November. Part of the condition of the grant is that we train them, I think it's twenty to thirty hours in Project Lead the Way. The Pierce Middle School looked at their science results this uh September, early release day. And just for perspective, you can see their scores uh from twenty thirteen and where they are over the last ten years to twenty-three. So they've really done a great job in that science department and the middle school. At the high school, they're running a new elective. And one of the feedbacks from NIESC across the board at the high school level was consistency around the curriculum, UBD units, common assessments. So a lot of that work that they're doing in department time over the course of the year is uh addressing that NIESC report and some of the continuing curriculum work that needs to be done. Um K to twelve EL, ELL learners, we had a TFM report, a tier focusing monitoring review of our EL program last year, and it brought back uh three concerns around staffing, uh access for some of our EL students and the curriculum that's a little bit um in need of an update and record keeping. So we have to file a continuous improvement plan, it's called a SIMP, and we're following that all along. I would say that there's a lot on this slide. Uh we're trying to work with the department to align to the standards of where kids are assessed. Uh we've seen an influx of maybe five additional EL students from last year. But I would also say the severity of need of these students that come is really um striking in terms of the language need, some background in trauma. And it's challenging to wrap support around these families when we don't really don't have capacity to translate and meet families where they are. So that's one of the things we've been working on in registration and family support with um Marty McKenna because um just walking them through the processes of school that we consider, you know, just normal, it's totally new to a lot of the families that are coming in.
I just have one quick question, and I I promise that I'm not even asking half of what I have because I realize we can deal with later. But um English language learners is the one area of the district where I feel like I know the least. Could you talk at a very high level, what is the model for delivery? Is the expectation that the classroom teacher is the one who is either dual certified or has gone through? Um I forgot what he's like, uh there was a special training that.
Yeah, everyone's required to have that for licensure purposes. Um that doesn't mean they're dual certified, there's just a certificate that's part of it, but.
And then instruction base is based on their uh WIDA level, so that depending on um when the student has entered the United States or when or where they test on. It's the WIDA, right?
Mm-hmm.
On the WIDA. Um so some students are in, are just in an uh EL class. Um and sometimes they are integrated in, it really depends on age and grade um and their assessment level, their English proficiency.
So yeah, some of our more significant students will have that pull-out support that Zakiya is talking about, but we really want to integrate our students into the, into the um general education setting so that they can build relationships and learn from their peers um in terms of the language acquisition.
I don't think I've seen the data from demographics of these families.
In terms of the hundred plus, yeah, we can do a breakdown on that.
Just I'm thinking of like a lot of sort of more recent waves, and we've seen those recent waves throughout here.
Yep.
And how are we tapping into community to support sort of that wraparound support that schools can't do on themselves, but, you know.
And when Central's assigned to monitor English language learning, I think in larger districts, it's like a department. We're so much smaller.
Yes.
As I said, this is the this, the area where I feel like I I know the least about. So thank you for highlighting.
I'll gather some of that data and share it.
I'll gather some of that data and share it.
This next slide speaks to the three pillars. We were working on personalized learning and UDL. Allowing students to have multiple means of engagement, representation, showing what they know. You heard in the Cunningham presentation around personalization through choice. We have two consultants that are going to schools, spending full days there and really getting into the work, modeling lessons. Attending grade level meetings, doing demo lessons, providing coaching to move that model along. And you saw how well, you know, the schools are doing with looking at data. So we have a district protocol in place now in terms of how we look at data and finding the student problem practice and the teaching problem practice. And how we can assign interventions for kids so they're really making gains in a quick six week cycle. And then assigning new kids that caseload, you know, we, we've definitely grown in that area over the last year and a half.
And in terms of the social emotional learning, you know, I think the research shows that social emotional needs have started well before COVID. And just I think COVID exacerbated it. So the work that Milton's doing is really highly focused. There's an SEL. There's SEL teacher leads, there's an SEL sort of subgroup that works together with the lover principal Karen McDavid. The adjustment teacher lead Jenny Bellevue. So there's a lot of work being done for that small group. The, the work currently that's integrated this year is there's second step program that's being rolled out. Amongst all the elementary schools, comm classrooms integrated throughout the community. You can see some of the work in the classrooms and also some of the strategies through adjustment counseling. The Michigan model, Boston web sales. And then our, we're introducing the Power School screener, the SEL screener this year. To see how that rolls out with some of the data collection around student need and social emotional learning. The, there's, so all of those are sort of tier one supports when you're thinking about the TSS model. So one of the, some of the work that we're sort of tasked to do is to really start looking at some of the tier two and tier three supports across the district. How do we, how do we integrate some SEL supports for students with higher needs or that have more focused needs and individualized, individualized needs? And then Zakiya's been doing some really nice work with her team around creating anti-bias lessons for, for the community.
And so then for equity and learning, I think it's really important that we just really talk about what that actually means. And so equity and learning means high expectations for all of our students with appropriate support for all of our students. And that's really what we want to see throughout the district. And even though we have each of these pillars separated, they are all really hand in hand. And so personalized learning is part of equity and learning and equity and learning is part of personalized learning, right? They, they, it's all cyclical and the same with the social emotional learning. You know, we need to make sure that all of our students are in a place where they feel safe and they feel supported so that they can learn. And that's going to look different based on their individual needs. And then, you know, one of the things that we are continuing to do is ongoing assessments. With our co-teaching model across our district to make sure that our access to instruction is equitable. So for all of our students, regardless of their learning status, whether they have a 504 or an IEP. Or another need that is not necessarily written down in a legal document. That we are making sure that we are providing the access that they all need.
Just some important updates. The elementary principals worked last year with some of the curriculum leads. We have a time on learning document that shares by content and by grade, the minimum and maximum of instruction. So we have some continuity and clarity across the district. We've revised a report card that we're going to be rolling out at the elementary level next year. Some of the feedback has been it's a little confusing to parents, but it's also not super teacher friendly. So we think we have a better version of that. We've solidified common planning time and just like in Cunningham talked about, when teachers have that block of time, they're making the best use of it of looking at data. Reviewing kids, finding the kids that are in need of support, reassigning interventions. Last year, we did have an eval committee. So we're trying to get better at giving teachers feedback from evaluators and being more consistent. And a lot of our RBC and PE staff are very happy. They're assigned to one school now and not traveling across the district. And that gives them more continuity, consistency and an opportunity to go a little more in depth with kids. As opposed to teaching and then trying to commute to another school and make time for the commute in an hour and a half class and then come back. At the secondary level, they're really focused on UDL, the NIESC curriculum updates. And we also had an eval audit last year, looking at some of the observation evaluations that were given to teachers. And we have a coach who's giving some feedback to the group in terms of having him be more specific and give teachers the feedback and coaching that they want. So they can really make a difference for kids. So our, in assessment, we're going to continue looking at these MCAS results. You heard tonight from the Cunningham group, we did have some new assessments. We have the DIBELS eight or M class that we're rolling out K to five that takes the place of Lexia. That was our screener last year. And then we have iReady, which is familiar to the middle school for math, but now they're using in writing. That helps us meet the requirements for dyslexia and some of the DESI requirements. But we also use it to triangulate with other data and assign interventions. The other big part I'm going to be working on with the curriculum team this year is some common assessment. Database for formative and summative assessments. So that when we see, for examples in the MCAS results, what's going on in grade four? We can dig a little deeper beyond MCAS or Lexia and iReady and try to find out what is going on in those classrooms. Is it a level of teacher experience? Is it student demographics? And try to pinpoint those pieces and pass that information on to teacher teams.
So as you know, that there was a spring program review for the special education department. So one of, there were three areas that were really highlighted. One was around assessment needs, one was around programming and clearly aligning programming with exit and entry criteria. And then the other piece was professional development across the board that was relatable for special educators, related service providers and educational assistants. So one area that we're really looking on in terms of assessment is really our improvement of data collection and assessment tools for not only IEP goals objectives. To help drive that instruction for students that are falling behind grade level or are in pullout services or even that co-teaching piece. And really looking at assessing the current elementary tools such as iReady and M Class. To see how we can use some of that data to help drive some of that instruction as well. To support some of the special ed programming. And again, looking at that entry and exit criteria for a lot of our programs. And then identifying one of the pieces that are lacking at the secondary level is really those benchmarking assessment tools to assess whether, what's working for the special ed program. So being able to identify some benchmarking tools from six through 12. I think six through eight, there's better data. It's really the high school level that's credit driven, grade driven, that we're missing a piece of that benchmarking data collection. So really looking into that and figuring out how we can help our special educators identify what students need on a, on a triannual basis. And with some progress monitoring.
So we have a lot of professional development to take a look at. So starting with training staff and some of our new programs, right? So there's M Class, iReady, IDAPAL, Power School, Calm and Safety Care, online mandated training for all staff. So one of the really nice things that the district has added is. Where does it go? Arcad. There's a new, a new site, which is a central location for all the mandated training for staff. And you log in and there's sort of, there's a list of the trainings that you need to go through is very clear. And you can go through them, you know, one at a time at your own pace. And so the educators have been able to do that rather than sort of gloss over in a marathon of training on the first day of school. I think it's been, it's much, been much more effective and much more manageable. And also it records when staff have done it. So from a district level, it's clear to see when everyone has received the training instead of hoping everyone is listening in an auditorium.
Sorry, I just lost my sign. And then some of the other professional development we're looking into. I think Garth has done a really nice job of starting to clean up and organize how, how people receive specific training that they need and professional development that they need. Again, looking at that student services professional development plan. Out of our office, we're really working on looking at that as a year long and then longer term approach. So that teachers are getting the PDPs that they need. Educational assistants are getting what they need to help support students in the classroom, such as how to read IEPs, how to look at accommodations. And how to integrate those accommodations into general education setting. We, this spring, Garth got their, the feedback from those educational assistants to see what they felt that they needed. So one of the pieces, one of the larger pieces that they were really interested in was around not formal safety care training. But some of those, some of those interventions that they can use to help de-escalate students in a moment and get them back on track and in class. Zakiya and Dr. Burrows went to Mass Ready to talk about racial equity, diversity, inclusion training. To have that racial equity, diversity, inclusion training. And then each department is also developing their own professional development.
So we've covered a lot. Our next steps, we're going to be working on these things between now and when we come back and give her another presentation. This was our first one. Thank you for bearing with us. We're going to look at the fall data. We didn't have it completely ready, but you saw Cunningham give you a glimpse of that. Stay on top of student progress, keep on those interventions. And definitely looking for additional resources as Danielle talked about, those supplemental resources that can make a difference for kids. So thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask for a favor? I, I heard about those names a lot, like iReady, M Class, but I don't know what subject they're specifically geared towards. So if you can give us a little, little chart of like iReady, is it more like math or? That'd be great.
We love acronyms in education. Yeah.
Probably an assessment chart would be helpful. Pre-K through 12, just to see it all in a snapshot.
What happens when with which grades.
And what gets shared with parents.
And perhaps also like how can we utilize Power School, the new LMS that we purchased, right? How can we incorporate all of these into maybe, as you said, like one platform? That not just the staff can access, but also like the parents can access, the students can access. So instead of going to so many different links, right?
I also think that's really important to be able to tell the story. Because I think when you get the numbers, it, it can be shocking to see, you know, a number. But it really doesn't give you the story behind it. It doesn't give you the day to day. So having a platform that aligns some of those scores together with, you know, teacher updates or curriculum and where the gaps are. It, it helps a little bit more tell the story. Because as a parent, you don't have the sort of, most parents aren't educators. So it's really hard to look at an iReady score, for example, in math and say, you know, and not immediately be concerned. Not knowing the story behind it. So.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a great idea. I'm sure Power School can do it.
But so like on that note, in the, in the next steps piece, I mean, I know Peter, you had sort of envisioned this as a quarterly update that would come to the school committee. You'll continue to process, as you're saying, MCAS and find the implications there. Like V was, you know, pointing out the ability to pinpoint areas that need attention. What is that sort of something we would expect to see the next quarterly presentation? Sort of like what you all have identified based on the data as the key areas to target, subjects and grades? And what's being done to do that? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll, we'll bring fall data, which Garth just mentioned, the, you know, M Class, iReady, common assessments. Anything else that we think is helpful to, to kind of appoint in time how we're doing. And then, you know, with the list of all of the things that we're doing, a lot of things, right? We've got a lot of initiatives underway. So looking at, one of the things we'll be talking about is how we believe the initiatives are impacting the data that we're seeing. You know, one of the things we're going to keep coming back to is MTSS and, and, you know, the, the tiered intervention system that. I mean, it was interesting when Zakiya and I were at the, the training the other day. The presenter said, you know, people get really confused about equity and they think it's all these different things. And she said equity is MTSS, which I thought was a really interesting statement.
Do you mind spelling out what MTSS stands for?
Multi-tiered System of Supports. So it's, it's tiered intervention. So tier one is, is general instruction. Tier two is the next level. Tier three is the, the three tiers. Is the most significant intervention.
And so for example, like at Pierce, where evidently, not just based on the MCAS, but based on the form of assessment data we've seen from previous years. Like, you know, so would it be something where you would be able to drill down on that and sort of talk about these are the, these are the various interventions that are taking place? Like in, I mean, that's actually, I don't know that that's something we've ever had, honestly. Like at. We hear, obviously we hear from site councils, which is great. And we hear report outs on the data about that ability to kind of think about the strategy. From your alls level, you know, when you're working. And sometimes that might not be in an individual school. It might be like a group across several schools, as we heard with like the ELs, for example. But anyway, that seems like helpful to look forward to.
And it's like looking at Pierce, for example, you know, you can look at what's happening at Pierce and the systems that are in place. But you also have to look at how the students are coming into Pierce. And so looking at four elementary schools and fidelity and, you know, are, are they all kind of not just using the same curricula? But what, what does it look like in the classroom? So that's where I was talking about going into classrooms and, and all of us being really present in school so that we, we know what's happening. And can kind of speak to it and problem solve and engage, you know, all of our staff and, and figuring out where we go.
Good point.
I must say, I really appreciate this conference of overview. I know there's a lot of information here, but I, I really do. I think it sort of allows us to have better grounding on what's going on. And not only in terms of curriculum, but also sort of the relationship with the UDS. I think we can engage in a very different, at a very different level. So with the information, so thank you.
For sure.
Can I jump in with a few questions? The, well, just a couple of points that have come up and I apologize. I was just taking notes as we were walking through some of this stuff. I do think like if we could see access data and kind of as relates, and as we were talking about the EL stuff and performance. I think that'd be interesting to just see how, how kids are doing and how quickly we're moving them out of. How quickly we're flipping them and getting them through kind of the program to proficiency with English. I, I was in looking kind of back at the data and then looking at you kind of your discussed efforts. One thing that struck me was like how well the pace of recovery is going for ELA compared to math. And not that math is very poor, obviously, like as we're saying, across the state, our performance is very high. But like my, my own experience is that like math is actually somewhat easier to more quickly push. Because it's very targeted skills versus ELA is like the same skills you're mastering over multiple years of like reading comprehension. It just generally takes longer to move. So I'm just wondering if there's any specific thing we implemented last year as related to ELA? Like new curricular program or anything else that, that we think kind of contributed positively towards that? Or if there's anything we're looking at specifically this year as it relates to math to try and re-energize kind of some of that growth? And get that to the place where, where ELA has gotten to as it relates to kind of getting back to pre-pandemic levels? So just on, on either end of that, I know that was a long-winded question.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be hard probably to pinpoint with ELA a significant shift last year that impacted MCAS scores. You know, at the end of last year, which we're, we're just seeing. just seeing. Garth, could you speak to, in terms of the I-Ready work and math, in terms of point in time, like, for example, last year at the beginning of the year, kind of where, how that might shape our response to where we are with MCAS?
ELA had a common curriculum that they had been using for years previous. Math had new curriculum come in, particularly at the elementary level. So it's going to take some time for that to build up. We're at a better, probably two to a four-year space at the middle and the high school. So I think, you know, teachers at the elementary level are typically more comfortable in the area of literacy. The math is an area that we're going to be working on. So I think over time, we have a better-aligned curriculum with rigorous, aligned to standards. I think in time, it'll produce the same results. It's just taking a while to implement and for teachers to get comfortable with it. The other side of the coin, for literacy, we focused a lot on writing, because that was the area that declined after the pandemic. And the other area that keeps coming up is early literacy, phonetic awareness, those sort of key skills, phonics. The two coaches that work on that are going around through kindergarten, first grade, and really helping those teacher teams identify the kids that are in need of support. So I think that, plus the resources that we have in literacy, make a huge difference. And now that we have more resources in math, plus the new curriculum, I think in time, we'll see the same or similar results.
Yeah, just to restate, like, overall, performance mastery exceeding still extremely good, like, top 10%. SGP, obviously, in math was not quite as good as ELA, so that context is very, very helpful. The other pace with the MCAS stuff I had a question about was, science was extremely strong in eighth grade, and it was not quite as strong in fifth grade, although Cunningham in particular seemed to have, like, be the only outlier as related to fifth grade science. And I was just to make sure folks aware, it's not a one-year thing, that's, you know, content that builds over multiple years, it's only tested in one grade, just for anybody who's not aware of that. So I don't mean to call it any individual teachers, right? That's obviously collective efforts to get to those scores. But just, again, anything within that, the comparison to fifth or eighth, or standardization across the schools, because the performance in the other places is very good. And again, science performance overall, kind of three through eight, was the best out of all the subjects. So that was also something I noticed.
Just one comment going back. So the 6 to 8 math curriculum were in year four, and the 9 to 11 were in year three. So elementary was only year one.
Gotcha.
I just wanted to make sure I was correct. And your question now is about science.
Science, yeah, fifth grade.
So two things I would say to that. One, the lack of clarity around instructional minutes for science, that new Time on Learning document, I think is important. So now all teachers know the minimum and maximum they need to teach in that area. And now social studies coming online to be an area that's going to be tested as well. We need to build up teacher capacity in that area as well, because it's a K to 8 effort. It's not just happening at the middle school. They do a great job, but it's those precursory years that, building up content and lessons that make a huge difference. So I think that document will certainly help, but I think there have been anomalies with how the teachers divide and conquer science and the teacher teams. Some go by a content model or department, or they rotate units. Now we've been more deliberate in making sure that everybody's teaching the same units, same amount of time, so there's more clarity, so you can have more predictable outcomes at the end.
Yeah, great. Yeah, I think that's a great document, so it's something that's important. Another question, I apologize.
It's okay, you can ask all our questions.
Saying somebody's to the end should ask more, so don't mean to put it all on you. The, like, one of the things around the Grade 4 ELA, obviously, the data that shown here, right, that's one of the areas of most kind of concern, or I guess focus, as was stated before. What's the, is I-Ready, the like, ELA internal assessment that we would use to kind of monitor? I guess I'm just wondering, like, were our internal assessments somewhat aligned and predicting that this is a place we were anticipating potentially struggling a little bit last year? Like, how well, and not even just for fourth grade, for any grade, how well were our internal assessments aligned with kind of ultimate performance? And like, how confident do we feel in those? Yeah, how confident do we feel like those are moving forward as it relates to kind of giving us an idea of how students will perform in these areas?
Yeah, now we're getting into it. So, last year we had Lexia, so that Lexio was really a screener to identify kids in need of support. It's not necessarily a progress monitoring tool.
Yeah.
M-Class does sort of the same thing. I-Ready, reading at the middle school is definitely aligned to MCAS, so we take that three times a year. But what we've been talking about is the anomaly in fourth grade. We need other measures between fall, winter, and spring that are internal, so we can identify kids in the performance gaps. Is it a curriculum piece? Is it a teaching piece? How do I identify that and find the kids that are struggling and assign other interventions? So that's like the next layer we're working on, besides just these interim benchmark assessments that are done three times a year. What are all fourth grade students getting? And how can we look at the district, the school, the grade, and the classroom and have comparative analysis across the board? And that's kind of the next piece we're working on this year.
Great. Glad to hear it. It's really exciting. I had a question, this came up in a conversation with some families just since we were talking about the world language programs. The middle school French program, is there a French course available to students who weren't in the French program K through 5? Because I saw that there was Latin, which I didn't know we offered in middle school, which is great. And then I saw Spanish, but also, it said French. But is that just kids who've been in the elementary program?
This is a former middle school teacher, yes.
So there, I really need a mic.
Yes.
So in the middle school, there is only French immersion. And so, that consists of two French classes. So that's the French humanities and then the French sort of literature course.
Gotcha, okay. And then the Latin and the Spanish are available to all the other students, though, so the world language are available. Okay.
Correct.
But can I assume that, from the way that the answer is presented, it means that in high school, there is a French course that student who doesn't never take French can take?
Yes.
Okay.
Other high school question, just because it mentioned some of the classes. How many AP courses do we offer in a high school?
I want to say we're above 20. I want to say 22.
20 was in my head, but...
Yeah, that's about right.
20 was in my head, but, yeah, 322.
And then on that, have we looked at any, or had any internal discussions about any implementation of AP for all courses within the district?
We haven't yet, but I've done that in the past, and I think it's something we will talk about for sure.
For the record, Karen Cahill just texted me, "It's 23 AP courses at the high school."
One of the 12 participants.
The last question I had, obviously, like, in looking at the school-by-school comparison data, is obviously the Tucker performing not as strongly as the other schools, also naming that, obviously, we have an interim principal at the Tucker currently. And like, what additional resources are we kind of having in place? Are we all thinking about as it relates to supporting him with, obviously, what is the, you know, I want to say the hardest job out of the elementary schools, but obviously the most growth that's kind of needed to be seen there?
I mean, we're, he's got a mentor. We are, we also hooked him up with a mentor here, so Karen McDavid is also working with him weekly and going over to Tucker. He's coming over to Glover and kind of learning. And, you know, there's a lot of things, you know, which he's shared in terms of his onboarding, in terms of understanding how things operate, and there's a lot that people just know, but it's not written down anywhere. So having that kind of in-district person as opposed to some leader from somewhere else to talk about what leadership looks like, when you're not, you know, he needs on-the-ground operational guidance, the things that he's never seen before. So that, I think, is really important and powerful. And all of us at the central office, too, are leaning in our various roles, too, and supporting in all the ways that are needed. And it's a new team, right? So it's a new assistant principal as well. So we're working with them, you know, spending more time there than we might in another year, just because we've got a new team that is sucking up all the knowledge and we're in there to support and continuing to communicate, problem-solve, all those things.
I'd just add two other things. Tucker also has access to Title I funding, so there's some additional opportunities there. And this is the first year they've had two or three additional special educators.
Four.
Right. And I think some of that work, like we talked about, is going to take some time to play out, but I do think that those sort of intervention pieces that are going to look different at Tucker are going to make a big difference, so.
Yeah, this is the first year they have a special educator for each grade, kind of assigned for each grade.
Yeah.
It's great. I'll stop there.
So on that, Anna, do you prefer?
Go ahead, and then I'll ask.
No, you can go ahead, because I think my question is sort of a closure, a temporary closure question, so.
Okay. So you had mentioned that we are in year four of our math curriculum and year four of our English curriculum at the Pierce Middle School, Amplify ELA and Desmos. And what has kind of been like, what has been the feedback in the last four years? Like, has it, is it doing what it needs to do, like, supporting students that need support and challenging those that need it? Like, what has kind of been the general consensus? And I know, Zakiya, you've been at the middle school, so maybe you can provide some insight, like, help me kind of understand.
Okay. Let's see. The general consensus is that students don't love Amplify, but I do think that there are some real positive aspects to the curriculum. I think that it is laid out in a way that offers students multiple occasions to encounter different skills and to practice them repeatedly. There are some good measures for collecting data in terms of, for their writing skills and quick writing assessments. I didn't love teaching Amplify, only because for me, it felt very restrictive as a teacher. I think there are some real benefits to it. I think that it is a little rigid. I think that for, for some of the, I think for some of the, for differentiation, it has some, some methods in place that benefit from teacher supplementation. So there are ways to, to teach students who need a little bit more support with Amplify, and it has structures in place, but oftentimes, those need teacher modification, teacher's adjustment, to really fine-tune them for your individual student, which is going to happen with any curriculum. You're going to need the teacher to do that. And the same for enriching for students who might need a little bit more of a push.
Okay.
There are ways to do this in Amplify, and I think most educators are using those, but I found that it was helpful for me to put some tweaks in, in order to really meet the needs of all my students. I don't know if that fully...
No, I think that's great. Thank you so much.
And I would say some of the work that we're doing with the curriculum is agreement K to 12 around curriculum, what's working, what's not working, and what can we refine and find the gaps in what we're offering and provide supplemental resources. Not the notion of that every X number of years, we have to adopt a new curriculum, but where can we find what's working based on evidence and data? Not that you like teaching blank in a certain way, that it's making a difference for kids. And that's the part that we're coming to consensus on, based on the results that we see here, and how can we improve the curriculum? And not just teaching like one way for a certain group of kids. So that's the part we're building out capacity with.
Okay, great. Thank you both.
So I guess my, my only question was, you sort of alluded to this at the beginning, that there will be something to sort through, the relationship going forward with the Curriculum Instruction Advisory Committee to this work. Is that something that, when we discuss at our governance retreat, sort of, the continued, you know, plan for our advisory committees? I'm sorry.
Rewind play.
I needed to, wow, I needed to eat my cookie.
I tried to milk myself to eat my cookie, and it didn't cut off.
Cookies were a bad idea.
I apologize. Sorry, everybody.
We need gummy worms.
I actually have those at home, too.
All I was, all I was signaling is that, you know, we're not going to resolve this right now, but that is part of the next step on our side, you know, which is related to the next steps you all will be doing, which is figuring out, you know, what is our ongoing relationship to this information in between the quarterly reports? And that, that's where this Curriculum Instruction Advisory Committee potentially has a role. And just to point out that I do believe that's on our list of things to talk about at our governance retreat to check in about. So you'll be there, so you'll be able to kind of help, help us navigate that.
Yeah. And I mean, one of the things just that I'm thinking about is, I think about what we've talked about tonight, is it could be a great place to, in a similar way we do with like the Finance Subcommittee, to kind of prep things almost, to look at fall data, to kind of dig in a little bit together, and then bring that to the quarterly report. So it could be a way to like, hit things, you know, in a kind of a, more of a committee environment where we have more time and can dig more, and then bring that kind of learning together to the quarterly report, I don't know.
No, I agree. This was, I appreciate the fact that you covered so much content, and I think one of the structures we put in place in CIA the last few years is, we focus on only two or three agenda items, so we wouldn't cover this much ground. But for those priorities that we've agreed on are worth putting on agenda, we agreed to only meet, you know, four times a year at max, because there is so much work. And to have a more frequent update wouldn't even give time to get implementation and collect data to then report. But I do think as a committee, we can prioritize what would be on those agendas, and at what pace and what frequency, and work in partnership with the district to say, you know what? This isn't camera-ready right now, we're still working on it. And it ends up being a mutually agreed-upon priority list.
I'll just say once, there's a lot of really good news, all the data, especially, as you said, the students with disabilities outperforming 2019. And I gotta believe that we've done, I know the district's done a lot of work with bringing more students back into the district, and our numbers are increasing over what they were in 2019. So for both those things to be true is really impressive. That's a great, great trend.
Might see him credit to the people that were here, not to me.
Thank you, Karen. I know you're somewhere watching.
Well, shoot my left, because it's 11...
She answered a question.
So I have a final, the Desi End of Year Report on my superintendent's report. I'd like to invite...
Have a good night.
That's right, we need some snacks.
Shout out to his wife for the nice new haircut.
Are you talking about Glade?
She already cut it, but she's the reason he got it cut. It's pretty nice.
I was talking about you.
Your haircut, his new haircut.
Saying thank you to your wife.
Very nice.
So this is Desi End of Year Report. It's only a 58-sheet spreadsheet that I'm happy to walk through with you, but this is, this is not the End of Year Report that I, quarterly report that I prepare, which is still sitting with her finance to take a... still sitting with her finance to take a look at. This one is the report that we have to submit every year to Desi at the 1st of October. Breaks down all the spending that we do by school, by level, what comes from the town, what comes from grants, what comes from indirect costs with the town. It, it's a lovely document that every, every district has a great deal of enjoyment feeling out.
Character building.
Yeah, I mean, it's this massive link spreadsheet. The, the reason it is here is a vote, is that every year, the school committee is basically, has to be informed of it, has to be given a copy, and the vote is actually to authorize the chair to sign it on behalf of the school committee and submit it to the state. So that's why it's here. Probably looking at the, the fourth quarter report in finance that I prepared will probably be easier to read than this one. But this is what the state uses to try to compare districts across all sorts of measures. And I'll say it's as good as districts fill it out and leave it at that.
But not for you. You are.
We have, we have an expert in our business office that are filling this out, Lisa McDonough. If there's a difference between the state's interpretation and hers, she's right.
If you guys are tooting your head to read this, you can download it and then open it and then.
Have great fun. Lovely bedtime reading.
If, if we're going, if we talk about this in finance command, I don't want to use a lot of time, but I have some questions. And I've seen this before for my own purposes, but there are obviously many differences. One question, just basic, is the school committee budget line items, right, versus town? Can you just quickly walk me through, like, what are generally the things that are town revenue as it's listed here versus school committee fund revenue?
Well, for instance, debt service lives on the town side.
Yeah.
Health insurance costs associated with school employees live on the town side. To the extent that there are, there is an indirect cost for the consolidated facilities department that's charged off against the town, that goes on the town side part. So, I mean, it's, those are generally things that are just not in the school department budget, things that, you know, we have, we do take to, use to our advantage, but don't necessarily have control over, you know, the spending of. So, I mean, basically, that's the idea, is that we get those numbers from the town. Amy Dexter works them out at the town site and gives us that, Lisa puts it in the report. But we handle grants, we handle, you know, the breakdown of, of all the spending. It's interesting because they have it in different ways. For instance, you'll notice in the spending that's on instruction, the instruction category, we have to break that up by school, which sometimes is kind of tricky to do if you've just bought a curriculum for the four elementary schools. You know, do you break it out by per pupil? Do you break it out by, you know, just split it four? You just, it is just a decision that you make internally, there is no necessarily guidance on that. So it's one of the reasons why it's, there's a little bit of judgment calls in some of those things. You know, we're supposed to break out computers bought for students and, and faculty by school. Well, if I buy 150 Chromebooks, I don't know where they're going yet. They're going somewhere because students are breaking Chromebooks right and left. So it, it's hard to, you know, take an expenditure like that and say, well, it's so many of the Chromebooks are here, so by their, in fact, you don't know. So it's more likely to be a, say, we're just going to split it four ways or six ways or whatever it is, that, that particular expenditure.
And for the viewing public, we do offer families the opportunity to insure the Chromebooks.
And for some people, that is invaluable.
But the, the school stuff, the $58 million is the, what voted on in town meeting.
Right.
And then the, the other $17 million is ancillary resources from the town that in the schools, like, as you said, consolidated facilities, I'm sure is the biggest one.
Retired teachers' health insurance.
Yeah.
Charged the town on a cherry sheet and things like this, you know, those are all.
Yeah. I know that from the most recent warrant committee, how they were just talking about that. Great, that's very helpful to read. What are, I don't, I still don't understand all the schedules, because there's so many sheets in here based on the different schedules. I know Schedule 7, just because of this transportation, that's one I'm very familiar with, but I don't know what 1, 2A, 1, 2B, C, 2, 3, 4, 19, like, and how all those numbers, does it really matter that much as I read this? Or is it?
Matters if you care.
I mean, I probably, I can, I can get that offline, I guess, I've just.
Well, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of things there, you know, some of them have to do with special education. They want to break out special education costs by, you know, primary, by secondary, by outer district, by, you know, and they're, and, you know, we break out special education transportation by level of the students. So in elementary, you know, we have to break out buses by elementary, by secondary and so forth. There's, you know, different schedules do different things because at some point someone wanted to know something and they just built another schedule for it, frankly. And so some of them are linked. When you put things in some, it populates others. So it's a lovely exercise in Excel.
Yeah.
Character building. No, but thank you for, and, and your team for taking the time to put this together because for someone with a much smaller budget, these kinds of schedules, there's a lot of subjectivity and you have to, you're working under the assumption that a person is putting goodwill behind some of the assumptions behind the numbers to make it all work. And to your point earlier, for comparative purposes, this is how the public gets to those average pupil costs and, you know, garbage in, garbage out. But I appreciate the high quality of work. As, as you all know, I signed the warrants and I have the opportunity to compare the accuracy of what's being invoiced with what's in the summary reports. And we have a very astute accounting office, and I very much appreciate the attention to detail that they pay when they're doing their work.
Yes, there, there are assumptions that are made throughout here. If you take a curriculum coordinator who teaches two courses, we charge them off 60% as a coordinator and 40% as a teacher. Another district might not do that. You know, so you always have to take the, you know, the granularity of the, of the comparisons has to be taken with equal, equal granularity of, of equal grade of salt. And in the sense that, you know, no two districts are the same, so nothing's going to absolutely line up perfectly. But it's a good snapshot of what last year looked like.
Well, thank you so much. I'll make a motion to approve the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education FY23 end of year financial report.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Dr. Pavlicek. And that, anything else for the superintendent's report?
That's it.
A lot of report today.
All right. Yeah, so. So, okay, chairs report. This is gonna be brief because I'll just propose that from now on, let's just try and like be crisp and do what we need to do with these final reports, but I'm not going to dwell on anything. I just wanted the update, we have the discussion piece here under school committee goals because last meeting, we did sort of have the conversation pertaining to the superintendent's goals, which we approved regarding the select board's five-year projection, which had sort of come to our attention after we had approved our goals. We said that we would bring that back around, but I guess I'm just gonna suggest and see what you all think of this. In our conversation last time, with that information, we were able to have Dr. Burrows really like edit his goals in real time to, you know, to reference that plan. Our goals, which we already approved, refer to, you know, supporting the work of Dr. Burrows as well as working with our counterparts, including in town government. And so I guess my, my wonder is, are we good to kind of keep our goals as is as we approve them, knowing that it's basically implicit there that we are, you know, also working with you to participate in that five-year plan?
Well, I looked at this earlier, and under the Student Academic Achievement and Wellness, the last bullet point, it doesn't have, it's, it does reference securing the financial and physical space resources. It just doesn't have a time interval. So I think even as it is written, it is adequate.
Yeah.
Because if we're securing those resources, it will reflect the five-year plan. I don't think any edits are necessary.
Any other thoughts on that? Okay, so we're not, you know, this is just on here as a discussion, we're not, we're not voting, you know, to do anything, but it sounds like we're sort of confirming that we're all still good with the goals as we had approved them. Perfect, okay. So with that then, I'll just go ahead and we can do committee reports, starting with finance.
So we have to vote to approve warrant number 13 dated October 5th, 2023, in the amount of $638,000. It should have been dated, not October 5th. $638,775, but that might be the day she's actually paying it. Can I get a motion to approve the warrant?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, so it's just the one more tonight?
I, you know what?
Number 12.
Who's number 12? Thank you.
That you sent last week.
Thank you for highlighting that because I did sign one last week. So the second warrant, vendor warrant number 12, in the amount of $485,033,54 cents, dated September 28th, 2023. Anyone want to make?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. I just want to say I appreciate you sending those warrants out because I voted on stuff all last year that I had no idea what I was voting on, so I appreciate that time reading that I now get, and so thank you.
My balls.
No, you're welcome. And as I said, our, our accounting department is extraordinarily accurate, given the volume of transactions they are working with.
To be honest, although I see all those paperwork and numbers, I don't know what I'm voting on. I just trust, trust that you guys have your judgment.
Invited to come with me one day, we'll do it together.
On their, the finance subcommittee meetings, like, I didn't see any on the calendar. Are there going to be some posted and could they be cross-posted? I'd love to attend some.
Yeah, it was, initially it was intentional, so when we had the finance subcommittee with the select board, and it made mention that we needed this five-year plan, and given Dr. Burrows' arrival and his goal of changing the format by which, the process by which we developed the budget, we agreed that we would reconvene at the end of October, where he would have had a time to meet the leadership team and say, if we're going to do this differently, what does it look like? We did agree after the last meeting to host a meeting to go over the end of year report that I alluded to incorrectly earlier today. That is scheduled for next Thursday at 4 o'clock. Mark will be chairing it. But you all should have gotten a copy of that report in email. It's, I can forward it, don't waste your time right now. I'll resend it.
Thank you.
But it, it's just an opportunity to talk about the end of fiscal year '23, which ended June 30th. Glenn has included a narrative with some of the highlights, but you'll also see the detailed financials. And in all honesty, take a look, because after a while, if you, you're in your second year on school committee, as you look at these reports, you'll start to see patterns in data, and it might have, make you have a really good question for him. But it's definitely an opportunity to see in the collective year end of what is cumulatively have, has happened in the district. I will double check with Charlene that it's cross-posted.
Awesome, thank you.
Mark's got this.
Well, also, if just Anna attends, given you're not able to attend.
Selena's going to be there.
No, I understand, but that would just be three committee members, so.
I think it's two isn't, I think two out of the three is enough of both.
No, no, it's an, I just meant for crossposting as a whole school committee meeting.
Oh, that's right, if you're the.
We wouldn't have quorum if only Anna showed up.
That's right, that's right.
Just, just in case Charlene didn't, because we didn't remind her.
Next Thursday at 4:00.
Cross-posted, that might.
It's gonna be on Zoom.
I mean, it's all over.
Perfect, or Google Meet, it's gonna be online. Great, thank you.
Thanks so much. So, facilities.
We'll try and keep it brief. So, facilities, we had a meeting, I gotta look back at the calendar here, the 20th of September, and then we had full day, the full day site walkthroughs on the 21st, where we visited every school. Glenn was gracious enough to drive us around a little bus. Very good driver. And got us to all the sites, walked us through, the principals were all very kind to give us some of their time. We had great turnout, almost the entire facility advisory subcommittee attended, which was great. And Lizzie was even able to join us for some of the walkthrough as well. And we were simply just looking at, again, the, the space issues, we're getting everybody kind of within that committee to have the opportunity to look. We were not able to deliberate because it was not a publicly posted meeting, so we haven't had a chance to hear what everybody had to think really about that meeting yet. We have another meeting in two weeks that we might have some more takeaways from, so that was exciting, and I'm looking forward to the conversation. The meeting on the 20th, we did get more, Chris Hayden was able to attend and share a little bit more about kind of what had occurred over the summer and some plans kind of going into this year. Actually recently shared kind of a draft plan of some SY25 capital improvement projects, potential improvements. So that's something we'll be discussing upcoming meetings as well, as it relates to kind of keeping an eye on, you know, our goals around giving, providing the fiscal resources necessary for the schools, one of those being facility. So those were some of the things that came up. Anything else you want to add?
I mean, Glenn, thank you so much for driving us around and, you know, he was, he was very calm as we were stuck in traffic, as all of us were like restless kids, but.
Five stars, five stars.
He had a camera though, so he was.
Although I have to say, a couple of schools, he did drop us off curbside, but when we got to Cunningham Colicott, we had to walk across the parking lot, so I only gave him four stars.
Your Uber rating has dropped.
You're not technically supposed to pull into that.
I'm just kidding.
So what are some of the projects that we got to?
We can share that with you. I'll forward you over the document.
No, thanks, you can just summarize it.
We haven't talked about, we didn't talk about the new FY25 yet, so we'll talk about that in one and two weeks. So I, we can give an update in the next school committee meeting to kind of recap everybody's takeaways from the, our collective takeaways from the 21st, and then also this updated capital project planning.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Yeah, and thank you again for initiating the school visits, you know, I thought, as was mentioned before, is really eye-opening.
Yeah, space, space continues to be very tight.
Yeah, also just thankful to the, your members of the advisory committee who I think have like full-time jobs like all of us, who did their day to spend it, and walking through the buildings, so.
And shout out to the Glover cafeteria staff as well, they, they fed us, which is very, I know, it's very nice.
That's great.
Daddy feeds your snacks.
My kids love their school lunch. They say it's better than my food.
So, all right, next is school building committee, and are you sticking with that or?
Stuck with it today. Um, all right, so, uh, school building committee, we met, uh, last Friday. Is that, oh, wow, gosh, time flies. Uh, yeah, we met twice last week. We met on, um, uh, Monday and Friday. Um, anyways, so last Friday was the last one. Uh, one of the things we've been chatting about is just the overall timeline, um, as we've shared before, of how do we kind of get to, um, uh, a design? How are we able to move this forward? Uh, and one of the things that's been under discussion, uh, has been kind of funding. Currently, the committee has about $275,000 allocated, uh, from town meeting, uh, in the May town meeting. We did some costing out to see kind of how, where that would get us. Sean, uh, did a great job of kind of creating a document to kind of track through of like, okay, how, uh, how much is this going to cost us for architectural and OPM services to push forward on the design? How quickly are we going to burn through that? Like what's our burn rate, uh, per month? Uh, and so what, what is the money we will need to kind of get us through the next funding opportunity, which will be in the May town meeting? And that was really like the discussion of just like, do we have enough running room here where we can wait until the May town meeting, uh, and then come back in the May town meeting with some updated information, ask for additional funding, or do we need to ask now? And the, um, you, the, the vote we ended up taking, unanimous vote, was that we need to ask now within the December special town meeting. Uh, so, uh, the committee voted to submit a warrant, um, uh, and it still needs to go through the select board to get the select board's approval and ask them to reopen the warrant, but the request was for an additional $400,000 of funding specifically for architectural services and for, um, uh, and to pair that with the existing $275,000 for also OPM services and then, you know, traffic studies, um, uh, other things that might, um, need to be necessary in order to kind of continue and push the, the project through. So all that is with an eye on moving as far as possible, uh, as quickly as possible, uh, until the, the May town meeting to try and address the space issues, um, that currently exist and, and get a new school built. So that was a big thing that was, uh, accomplished. We also talked about the, um, OPM, uh, process of selecting a new OPM. We are still in the middle of bidding. We received bids, we received seven of them. Uh, we have a committee selected that's going to be reviewing bids, um, and Nick Milano from the city is, uh, helping to coordinate that. All the members on that committee are currently reviewing bids. I was looking at some today and we have to get, um, we have a, a rating that each person has to do for all seven proposals. We'll send that to, uh, Nick by Friday and then we are meeting, um, sometime, um, we're, we're meeting as a smaller committee to discuss, create three finalists out of the seven and bring those back to the full school building committee to select an OPM. So that, those are the next steps, uh, for that process. So, uh, we are excited for that. Uh, and then at the same time, we're still developing the RFP for the architects to get that out, um, so that we can again, move, move quickly, um, if we get it. All that is happening at the same time while we are waiting for word from the MSBA. Uh, we expect to hear from that in December. So if we hear back from MSBA that we are accepted, their initial, uh, notification to us, I believe, is that like our funding would be around 45%. Uh, that was not exact. That was like an approximate number, uh, so we should know in December if we're accepted and what our funding number is. If we get acceptance to MSBA, that potentially changes all the other work we are doing significantly. So like we are kind of going down these parallel tracks. We just, we don't want to be caught flat-footed if we don't get MSBA funding and waste all this time. So we are doing a lot of work now that might be wasted. But with, with that in mind, uh, it will be very useful if we don't get MSBA. If we do get MSBA, acceptance to MSBA, we'll still need to do a financial assessment to see what is the funding we'll get from MSBA? What is the potential benefit to the project? What's the cost of waiting? Because as we know, the MSBA process is long and it will delay the project. It will take longer than, uh, it will if we kind of move forward without MSBA. MSBA also has some requirements that make projects a little bit more expensive. So there are some like downsides of MSBA, but the plus side is getting funding, free money from the state that we don't have to spend. So, uh, but there, that's something we'll use the expertise of the OPM for to help assess if there's a reason we should decline MSBA funding because of escalation costs within construction would actually kind of offset. So, you know, we'll, we'll look at it, but there's really not a whole lot to discuss there until we hear back from MSBA. And the other piece with the warrant article is that we probably, we will definitely not find out about MSBA until after the warrant is officially closed. So again, we're submitting this funding, but the funding warrant article, as it was written and approved by the committee at least, was, uh, had a provision that if we get selected with MSBA and choose to go forward with MSBA, that funding will go back to the town because the funding won't be, it won't be necessary if we move forward with MSBA because we'll kind of have to take a couple steps back and go through the MSBA's modules and again, slow down the project a bit, um, if, if we move forward in that direction. So that was a lot, uh, and that was not short. I apologize, Lizzie. Uh, any questions from members?
What is the, um, timeline for MSBA? Like.
It's like, last I heard was, uh, takes like seven years is their process. Uh, we are, we could potentially move forward with the first couple modules, which are like the feasibility study and site location a little bit quicker than most towns. So that, that should shorten it. Uh, but it still is, we still have, would have to go back and again, start from kind of those things that we've already kind of done on our own and redo them through the MSBA process.
You'd have to do like the feasibility studies and traffic studies and all of them.
We'd have to kind of redo some of that stuff, um, and, um, you know, re-select an OPM and an architect and kind of slow some of those things down. So again, this is kind of where we're, we are moving forward in both directions just because the timing, unfortunately, the MSBA decision doesn't line up well with, uh, town meeting and, um, you know, our hope is, if, if they decline us, our hope is that we start the next calendar year kind of with an OPM, with an architect, with funding, and then we can move quickly, uh, with all three of those things in place, um, versus if we waited for MSBA's decision, we essentially have to wait till next May, uh, to kind of do a lot of that because we wouldn't, that'd be the next funding opportunity after December.
What is our current timeline?
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't want to speak too much before we get like an OPM and our architect on board, uh, and it also, it really depends on town funding, uh, decisions. So, um, you know, a feasibility schematic design somewhere between three and six months, uh, probably, uh, from my expertise at least. So that means a really kind of rigorous best-case scenario, uh, and what I'm certainly hopeful for is that we can have enough information to actually come back to the May town meeting and present something. That might not be possible, but that would be, that, that there is a chance that that is the case. And then obviously at the May town meeting, if we don't have enough information by the main town meeting, then the next opportunity would be the fall town meeting. And then once we get the funding, then you can do a, um, then you can move forward with the designs. You can move through construction drawings. That'll probably take six months. It could take a little bit less than that. Uh, and then procuring a contractor and then constructing the project on that kind of site, I'd assume is two-year construction timeline. So, you know, altogether, that's about three years. That's fairly quick, so maybe a little too hopeful, but three compared to seven, say. So there's, it's a couple-year difference potentially is part of the, the reason we're still having the conversation.
Great, thank you.
Of course. Anything I missed? I'm sorry.
Thanks, Mark. All right, so that just brings us to Milton Foundation for Education.
The MFE had its kickoff meeting last Wednesday and they were happy to share that they're accepting grants from our teachers through October 20th. So if anyone is, is listening or watches it later, please share with your staff that this is a great opportunity to fund projects within your classroom. And they're also accepting group grant proposals. They also shared that the Monster Dash is scheduled for October 29th, which is a Sunday. They're going to have a bouncy house in addition to the run, so they're trying to have the same kid-friendly activities they had last year. And as we do every year, there is a T-shirt decorating contest and the deadline for our students, elementary students, to submit artwork is October 11th. And they are looking for volunteers from our teaching staff. So in the next newsletter, I believe, the superintendent's newsletter to the faculty, there'll be an, an ask for our teachers to volunteer and that's it.
My son submitted a T-shirt design. It's pretty cool.
With his name on the back.
Yeah.
All right, thanks so much. Um, so that's just approval of minutes then. And we have one set of minutes, which is September 20th, 2023. Does anybody have any edits to the minutes? There's one typo. Your name's missing an N. I can't see what page it's on, but it's under the school building committee update. I mean, that's just such a small edit. If no one has any other edits, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the minutes of the Milton School Committee meeting of September 20th, 2023. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. Um, so just next meeting agenda items, um, Milton High School Site Council is still planned.
Community Schools.
Community Schools update?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we, we met with Martha today and she's going to bring her team as well, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
Is there anything about transportation that's, can be updated?
Um, I can in my superintendent's report for sure, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um, we just have these couple of items around MASC delegate and resolutions pertaining to the conference. Um, so those will be under the chairs report.
The end of year report.
The fourth quarter report will, okay, um.
Well, the school committee.
We had, um, but we're not, the FY 25 budget calendar, we're not doing yet, right? That will be coming later.
I have to check in to find out what the, where, where we are on the admin side.
Okay.
Before I can say that.
Okay. Um, and then the FY 25, 27 capital requests. I have that on here. The sort of draft, I'm not sure, you know?
Then they have to be voted because they have to go into the capital committee budget. It should be as devoted item on your next meeting.
Yeah, okay. All right, it's there.
25 to 29?
27 is, but maybe that was extended to 29? Is that? Who's like, who is, um, is that something you're?
You can just cut off those two years if we need to, but.
But you're going to be away. So.
Maybe move the agenda item?
Peter, is that something that you'll be presenting or?
You talking about the capital?
Yeah. Who's?
Normally either, uh, Chris Hayden presents the, uh, well, has produced the capital for facilities. Bob Patterson has produced the capital for IT, so.
So would they be joining our meeting probably to present?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to present, to know it well and present it.
I'll leave that to you, you know?
Yeah.
But certainly they're more than welcome to come, join us if they want to. They could zoom in if they want to, or you can just work with them.
Okay.
Okay, um, and that just leaves committee reports. So we'll have finance at least for warrants and the fourth quarter report will be under that. And then, um, we will be joined by Lisa Troyer, representative to the Climate Action Committee, who can report out, uh, from their work. And then it sounds like school building committee again?
Uh, facility advisory committee and school building committee will both have meetings before then.
All right. Policies after, so that will be next time. Okay. All right, anything else?
I suggest we put Lisa early for her sake.
That's a good point.
Okay, sweet. Go late again?
Yeah. Okay, thanks for, yeah, I'll talk, work with Charlene on that. That's a nice idea. Um, all right, so anything else?
Well, I, I'm maybe bringing a mentee from the Harvard, um, EDLD program.
Oh, great, okay.
It's gonna be my mentee.
Oh.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So he's gonna be in district on Wednesdays and Fridays. Seems like a great guy and.
It's a great opportunity to learn what it's like to be the school committee meeting.
That's right, there you go.
Superintendent.
All right, well, that's something to look forward to.
He, he attended Porch Fest. He, he, he really liked, um, the district and the town and everything, so I think it'll be hopefully helpful for him and for us and looking forward to it.
Nice.
Bet yourself quickly.
I was gonna say, like a month, two months in Massachusetts. That's not bad.
Okay, well, um, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, great, thanks, everybody.
That's all.
Is Andre Salanzos still the head of that department?